Live.
Okay. Sounds like we're online, so welcome. We welcome everyone out to our RDA meeting. The Redevelopment Agency of Weber County, holding this regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015. We'll move immediately to our consent calendar, which the only item on that consent agenda is the approval of the minutes for our previous meeting, which was held on...
July 1st.
...1 of 2014. You have those minutes? Is there any, are there any comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I second that.
Motion is second to adopt the consent calendar, which is to approve the minutes. That's the item. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously to our action items. The first item is the appointment of Chair and Vice Chair for the Redevelopment Agency of Weber County. We have generally followed our same pattern as the commission meeting, but it's up to you if you'd like to adjust that in any way. What do you want to do?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Kerry Gibson as the Chair of the RDA and Commissioner Matt Bell as the Vice Chair.
I second it.
Okay. Motion is second to appoint Commissioner Gibson as the Chair and Commissioner Bell as the Vice Chair of the Redevelopment Agency. Discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, request for approval of a resolution of the redevelopment of the Redevelopment Agency of Weber County, Utah, adopting and amending housing plan for uses of tax increment housing funds allocated under sections 17(c)(1), 4(12), 17(c)(2-203), and 17(c)(3-202) of the Utah County, Utah Community Development and Renewal Agencies Act. And Commissioner Ebert, you're listed as their presenter today, so it's all yours.
So, we're in the process, as a housing authority, of looking throughout the community. There's actually a plan that's been formulated, put together, and finding low-income areas within the county that are in need of housing. Presently, we're looking in the Roy, generally in the Roy area, specific to aging. Forecasting in the next 12 to 15 years, 75 million citizens will be considered in the aging category, and of those 75 million, 70% will be considered low-income. So, it's a, it's an area of concern as our population starts to age, specific to low-income. And so, we're, we're trying to keep up with that as a housing authority. And in the process of doing that and building these type of facilities, financing them is always a concern and issue. The RDA does have some funds available for low-income housing. The only stipulation right now that has become a barrier for the Weber Housing Authority to use some of that money is that there's a requirement that that might be expensed only in unincorporated areas within the county. Several years ago, Weber County created its own housing authority and split away from Ogden City. And by doing that, it created a specific area that is not being represented, and those are cities that are not Ogden but are not unincorporated. So, at this time, we feel it's appropriate to adjust the housing plan and allow those underserved communities to use those RDA funds that are available.
So, Dave, would you just clarify for me then? I think what I'm hearing the commissioners say, which, which makes sense, that the Housing Authority then, as part of these RDA funds, under the current language, could not spend, expend money outside of unincorporated Weber County. This change would make it so that they could anywhere in the county besides Ogden City.
As a clarification, there are two parts to it. The Housing Authority specifically had its mission in the unincorporated area. What you're amending today through this resolution and amendment of the housing plan is allowing funds generated within the project area, this RDA, which were restricted to that project area, to now expend funds outside that project area. So, the RDA controls the funds. They could go to the Housing Authority, or in this case, I think part of what we were trying to accomplish for commissioners is allow a donation of these funds to the Lantern House, and that's what this accomplishes. From the RDA, it doesn't have to go through the Housing Authority.
Okay, that's my mistake. So, this is specific to the Lantern House?
No, this is, this you, no, you're, not your mistake, Commissioner, because we are expanding where these funds can be spent. Before, it was only to the RDA project area, which was very limited, and within the city. So, this gives the RDA, when you're sitting as the RDA as you are here today, and those funds are generated to the increment there, to expend those funds for purposes allowed under that.
So, I, I will, let me just say, I do appreciate, you know, I, Commissioner Ebert, as he came aboard here just a couple of months ago, has become quickly very, very involved with the Weber Housing Authority, and I think that they have been extremely thorough in their assessment of the need. I've heard talk about this for quite a while now, of, of where the needs are for RDA funds, as well as, as well as the efforts of the Weber Housing Authority. And it has been, and Commissioner Ebert, I think, having served on that board, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you, would, is it, would you believe then that they, that they believe that there is significant need outside of that unincorporated area, and that, and that's why this is, this is brought before us? Because it was their recommendation, was it not?
Yeah, the recommendation was specific to allowing funds that are presently in the RDA, specific to not only homeless, but to the aging community, to be able to have access outside of the unincorporated. Because at this point, this, the housing plan requirements are only for the unincorporated area. Present, we have a need outside of the unincorporated and in the incorporated. I just wanted to make sure that this adjustment to the housing plan also allows the RDA fund to be expensed, not only for something such as the Lantern House, but also for other type of projects that are outside of the unincorporated.
Yes, my mistake. Yep, that's correct. You may do that. That's what this expands.
Okay.
Both the RDA and the housing plan are, and the Housing Authority can expand those.
So, we had somewhat of a concern that the housing plan was very specific, and the RDA requirements only allowed for unincorporated. And now, this housing plan will allow for both, which allows us to assist the Lantern House in fulfilling its mission by finishing its facility, and allows us also then to use some of these RDA funds to start building a facility specific to aging, but eventually other facilities for low-income in some of the participating cities. I just want to make sure that's where we're going.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 1 between, with the amendment of the housing plan for use of tax increment housing funds allocated in Weber County.
I would second that motion.
We do have a motion and a second then before us after that discussion to adopt and approve Resolution Number 1 as presented before us. Is there any further discussion to that motion?
Mr. Bell?
Roll call vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
And Mr. Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. Is there any other agency business to bring up today? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to our public comment. Is there any from the public, are there any from the public who would like to comment on this particular item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to our final item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second then that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Okay, since we're a little late, as soon as, we'll go ahead and begin as soon as the recording is ready to split. Good to go? Okay. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order now of the regular meeting of the Board of Weber County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 3rd day of March, 2015. We welcome you all here with us today. We do have a change on our agenda. The individual that we had asked to give the invocation, Verda Rost, is averse to winter driving conditions, and has asked if we, if we have her back next week to give the prayer. Since we just heard that, we didn't, we didn't have time to make another assignment, so I will offer the invocation. Thought of the day, Pledge of Allegiance will then be led by Jay Vastarkas, and the thought of the day by Commissioner Ebert. Join me in prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to have the opportunity to gather here today in the capacity of this Weber County Commission meeting. We are grateful for all who are involved in our community at every single level, for all of the good that is done, and for the wonderful opportunities that we have as a result of being citizens of this great nation, this free land. We are grateful for those who have come before, who have sacrificed so much that we might be free, that we might be able to express ourselves, and that we might be able to do as our conscience dictates. Father, we are grateful for the moisture that has been provided this day. We are grateful for thy kindness and goodness unto us in so many ways. Please bless us as we go throughout this meeting, that we might act with wisdom, integrity, and honor, and that all of those who are participants in this meeting today might do the same, and might be a part of a positive solution for our community in all that we do. We pray for continued blessings upon us as we continue to serve and do the best that we can in whatever aspects we choose to serve in. We say these things humbly in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please speak up for me. I have the Pledge of Allegiance to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
So, yesterday, a gentleman by the name of Theodore Seuss Geisel, and I'm not sure if I'm saying Geisel right, because I know the gentleman as Dr. Seuss, celebrated a birthday of 111 years. Dr. Seuss was an author and illustrator of over 47 children's books, and is one of the most well-known authors of our time. So, in his memory, I'd like to read a quote that I really like. It states, "Life's too short to wake up with regrets. So, love the people who treat you right, forgive the ones who don't, and believe that everything happens for a reason. If you get a chance, take it. If it changes your life, let it be. Nobody said it'd be easy. They just promised it would be worth it." I like that quote.
Love it. Amazing things we have learned from Dr. Seuss over the years. Thank you, Commissioner Ebert. Appreciate that thought. Our consent items are next. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $842,853.86. Request for approval to ratify warrants number 318439 through 318585 in the amount of $762,988.86 dated February 20th of 2015. Request for approval of warrants number 318586 through 318951 in the amount of $1,295,000, or $643.48. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on February 17th of 2015. Request for approval of new business licenses. Request for approval of ACH payments to US Bank in the amount of $116,023.18 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending February 16th of 2015. Request from the Weber Morgan Health Department for approval of surplus office equipment and furniture. Request from the Weber County Information Technology Telecommunications Department for approval to surplus 273 telephones. Request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and Utah State University Extension Service for education work in 2015. Request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weber County and the following individuals. Karen Burton, Sandra L. Corp., Don Gaskell, Don M. Gaskell Jr., Michelle Maycock, Larry Slagowski, Robert D. Carpenter, David J. Krager, Gary Heward, Jose Morales, Janice B. Van Orden, Douglas D. Coleman, Raymond C. Day, Donald R. Kelly, and Claudia Price. Those are our consent items, Commissioners. Is there any discussion and/or action on those items? Did Ricky by chance ask you to make comments on?
He did. So, for the warrant register, $748,000, or approximately 58%, is a payment to Select Health and MetLife for dental and health insurance. We also have about $73,000 to the Weber Housing Authority for monthly housing payments. That's about 6%. And another 6% or $75,000 to Marriott Sladerville for 2014 Ramp Award for the River Cove Nature Area and Centennial Trailhead.
2012 award?
2014, sorry. The rest of them are just regular, ordinary expenditures. Nothing of note.
Great. Well, I like having that additional explanation. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions on the warrants or any of the consent items?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent items as read.
Motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, that motion passes unanimously. The consent items are adopted. Action items. Item number one is a request for approval of a resolution of the Commissioners, Weber County Appointing Members to the West Warren Park Board District. What is this one really called, Brooke?
You know, it says on the resolution, West Warren Park Governing Board. I'm gonna go with that, maybe.
Special Service District Number 6 or something?
I've heard a few, I've heard Reese Park, West Warren Park, so I'm not really sure.
We're not getting into that one.
Right. Exactly. So, I'm gonna go with what?
Okay.
The Attorney's Office sent up.
Excellent.
So, yesterday, I am bringing before you three vacancies on the West Warren Park Governing Board. These three vacancies are gonna be staggered to offset the term limits for the, the three board members. So, there will be two four-year terms that will run through December 31st, 2018, and then they'll do a two-year term for one of the vacancies running through December 31st, 2016.
Say, say that again, on the terms, the length of the terms?
There will be two four-years running through December 31st, 2018, and then one two-year term to run through December 31st, 2016.
I, I was under the impression that they were gonna do just one, two, and three-year terms, you know, one one-year, one two, and one three. Does that, does that matter?
For four-year terms, in the order of stagger, you can go two or six. That's how we've done it.
Okay. All right.
Is that all right?
Hey, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. I'll make motion. We gotta...
Well...
Oh, go ahead.
We had seven applications turned in, and I, I sent them all to you in the packet, so I can read the names if you'd like, but...
Yeah, go ahead and read the names to us. We have them.
The seven applications, we had Brent Davis, John Mibis, is it Mibis or Mevis?
Mibis.
Mibis. Joseph Giordano, Douglas Hall, Janelle Bell, Doug Taylor, and A. Craig Saunders.
And I will just, having looked over the applications, it's good to know them all. I, in this particular case, I know them all very well, and frankly, every one of them would do a phenomenal job here serving. They're all residents of the district. They have a deep love for that park and that area, and most of them have spent an awful lot of time offering community service in the past to the park. Now, I know we have a couple that have been there for quite a while, they, that are, that are applying again and have asked to be reappointed. My guess is, and my suggestion to the Commissioners would be, that the one that has been there the longest is probably the one that we ought to put in the shortest term, so that we can then, once, once a new person gets trained here that we put in, we can make another rotation here in, in another few years. But for right now, we do have, I think the one that has served the longest, even before it was constituted in its, in its current form, was Johnny Mibis. I think he was on the board long before it was an official board.
Right. He's listed on his application. He's the current chairman.
So, so my suggestion is that we would put him on as a four-year, four-year term, and then reappoint Doug Taylor, who is the other person that has been there, and then choose between the other members at your pleasure as who you'd like to have on that board as a third member. Commissioner Bell, I think I interrupted you, and I apologize.
No, I probably interrupted you. What Resolution Number is it?
19.
19. I'll make a motion that Resolution Number 19, Appointing Three Members to the West Warren Park. Doug Taylor to a two-year term, Johnny Mibis to a four-year term, and Brent Davis to a four-year term.
Can I amend that motion?
Sure.
I thought we were, I thought the Chair suggested that Mr. Mibis be a two-year term, and then the other two that you suggested be a four-year term. Well, my suggestion was that Johnny be the shortest, but did, are we doing a two-year term?
Yeah, there's, there's one two-year term.
Then I was, I was confused, because I thought we were doing two fours and a six, but my, my suggestion was the short, that Johnny have the shortest term, because he's been there longer, so. Would you, what you, your motion would be Johnny as a two-year term?
My motion would be Johnny as a two-year term. Johnny Mibis, two-year term. Brent Davis, four. Doug Taylor, four.
I'll second that motion, as reiterated. Okay. Motion is second then, that we approve and adopt Resolution Number, what did we say it was?
19.
Number 19. Appointing Johnny Mibis to a two-year term. Doug Taylor to a four-year term, and Brent Davis to a four-year term. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brooke.
You're welcome.
I think you're up on the next one as well.
I am.
This one is a resolution for approval, request for resolution, approval of a resolution of the County Commissioners, Appointing Members to the West Weber and Taylor Cemetery District Board.
Correct. So, with this board, there's just one vacancy, and I forgot to mention with the others, these notices were posted and, and noticed according to the state statute, this one as well. So, on this, we have a four-year term for one vacancy that's being left by Larry Levitt. It will run through December 31st, 2018. We received two applications, one from a Brett, Brett Harper, and a Roger Heslop.
Okay. Again, my, I know them both. My simple suggestion on this one is that we want to involve as many people as we can, and I know that Roger Heslop serves on our, on our Western Weber County Planning Committee Board, and so I would recommend Mr. Harper in this particular, this particular assignment. Commissioners, do you have a pleasure?
I agree. I think it's important that we spread around boards and committees to as many citizens as we can, gets them experience, but also gives them fresh perspective, so unless Commissioner Bell has a comment?
No, I'm good with that.
I'll, I'll move to adopt Resolution 20, Appointing Brett Harper to the Board for a four-year term.
I second that.
And before we vote, I just have to say, on both of these issues, I'm excited, because we generally don't get a lot of interest in these types of boards, and the fact that we had a choice to make on both of these is great. I mean, it shows a willingness on the part of our community to, to be involved and care and be a part of the process, and so I, I compliment all who have applied, you know, for being a part of the process and being willing to serve, so. We do have a motion and a second then on the floor to adopt and approve Resolution Number 20, Appointing Brett Harper to the Taylor-West Weaver Cemetery District Board. I've always said Taylor-West Weber. It's listed, West Weaver-Taylor. We'll call it both, I guess. Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. They're appointed.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Brooke, for your work on this. This is a, a major process every year to organize all of these postings and board appointments, and we appreciate Brooke for doing such a great job of that. All right. That comes to the end of our, to the end of our business for the day. Next on the agenda is our public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak in public comment, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less, as noted, as indicated here on the, on the timer. Come on up.
Corey Colby, 2181 East Colby Road, Ogden. I don't know, how far are we along on the process of Skyline Drive? Do you guys know? The, the, putting it through, Matt?
Jared's right there.
How far down that road?
30% designed.
30% designed.
I'm just interested in three things. One, if we're putting the road in, we need to get the sewer in it, the water in it, so we don't have to dig it back up again. I'm also wondering if we're gonna leave a holding strip on each side of it through the property that is being bought to put it in, so that future development of those lots pays their fair share of the road that goes in front of it. I've put close to a mile of Skyline in that I paid for, and as a taxpayer, I just have a real heartburn with giving all those improvements, whether the landowner wants to put the lots in or not, at some point, they will. And we did Skyline Drive on the far west end when Curtis was here. He left a strip, and as those lots developed, those lots paid into the, it was a predetermined price, lineal foot of what was spent in front of those lots, and that was paid back to the county as those lots developed. So, those are the three things I'm kinda hoping we address as we put that road in, 'cause I don't want to dig it up again in two or three years to put a storm drain or a sewer in.
I think we're, I think we've, Jared's here, so I think he can answer that. I'm pretty confident that we're not gonna re-dig this road up. I think they've been in contact with you on Highlands, too, haven't you?
Yeah, we have meetings scheduled for this end of the week.
So, there's gonna be a, did you get a notice? There's gonna be a meeting for the community.
The notice is going, went out yesterday, so you should give it this week.
Okay. Anyway, I'm just...
Okay.
That's it. Thanks.
Before you step away, can I just really quickly, some contact with members of the Lantern House Board, and I would just like to express their appreciation to you in a public forum for your assistance in, in that project, and for your insight, and, and the things that you're willing to do.
It, it's not done yet, so hold off.
Well...
That was gonna happen today before it snowed.
Well, there is appreciation there for the community, specifically you in this instance, stepping forward and helping and doing outreach, which is what makes this community stronger, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm always glad to, I, I love these kind of projects, so, and, and it's gonna be really good for the community, so.
Thank you.
It's, it's a nice facility.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. Douglas Hanson, West Weber.
Morning, Douglas.
Again, the subject I want to talk about is the Little Weber Cut Off of the Flood Control Mitigation Project you have going on. At this point, I have received reports from two independent professional engineers that again confirm what I said last time, is that the canal that is, has been designed is overdesigned. They both come really close to agreeing with each other, saying that that full would carry 2,500 to 2,600 cubic second feet, cubic foot per second, rather. That is two and a half times the stated objective of the capacity needed for that structure. That structure, then, is oversized, and it impacts not only us, but it now, with this evidence, we should be able to consider that and reconsider the design of the project. It impacts, again, our prod, our property, but it also has, if that's the case, incurs a lot of extra cost to the county and the taxpayers of this county. Again, I'm trying to save you money by finding out additional information, presenting it to you. But apparently, I have no response when I've submitted that to the county engineer. I don't have any information back that's good, bad, or indifferent. These, both these independent engineers requested additional information, which I have asked from the, the county and from the contracted engineer, I have not received anything back yet. I can't give them additional information, so what they have is what they have. So, I give that to you, saying, here's the information. I've given this information before. It seems to be ignored, or thrown away, or not considered. I still ask to reconsider the design of this, to make sure we save money and lower the impact of time and effort. the impact of time and effort and money from the county and impact on us. Again, that flow through that structure right now, if it's at twenty-five hundred cubic second feet, that's about half the capacity of the river at flood stage. And in 2011, the report was there was five thousand second feet going through the river, and twenty-five would be half of that, so we can put half the river through that. And then it goes west and dumps into the neighbor's property at the Little Weaver, and then where does it go? It floods. And, and I can see where it'd back flood and flood his property a lot more than it would have ours. But anyway, because I've, we've asked for information, we continue to say we want to work with the county to formulate an agreement to continue that channel through our place, but I got no response. We continue to be willing to work, to work out an agreement, to define the details, so we have something that protects us, protects our liability, and protects our operation, restore it back to where we'd like it to be, but I've got nothing in return. And my question is, are you refusing to negotiate? You refuse to provide information, you're refusing to do that for us, so that we can continue to operate, to continue to work out an agreement? From what I can see, that the last information maybe you've turned out to the attorneys, that means if that's the case, then we are going to have to have more impact on us. We'll have to get an attorney, that's more cost to us and more detriment. We have no benefit yet to this thing, and now it's gonna be worse. So if you're gonna take the bully role and push us into that, then it, it impacts us a lot more, and we, we didn't want this, we don't want that, we'd rather work it out, but that seems to be the case, and if that's the case, then we're gonna have to go to attorneys and litigation.
So, again, you know, it's unfortunate, because we continue to have Mr. Hanson come to the microphone and make accusations that are unfounded and untrue. We cannot discuss it, I, Commissioner Ebert just asked me if I could have Jared come up and respond, and you know, I think we're, I think we're kinda done playing that game. Our, our staff, again, will be more than happy, as they have been in the past, to continue to sit and talk and work this out, but when, when you come up, frankly, Mr. Hanson, and say we've got these experts that have challenged the very public information that we have put out regarding the design of this project, and then you won't even tell us the name of these experts, you won't tell us who they are or what information they're using, I mean, it's just, it's, it's unfortunate, because it's now become a sideshow for this committee, for this commission that we have to deal with every single week, and, and we'll continue to, to deal with it if that's what you choose, because that's what the public has the right to do, and we want, we want to hear, but unfortunately, it seems as though you don't want the answers, and so we're going to have this item on our agenda very soon, where the public comment's over. This is, this is my, no, the public comment's over, this is my time now.
Now, you're, you're taking a lot of time to make accusations to us.
Now, this is my.
My information is founded on professional engineer.
Officer, can you help Mr. Hanson leave the podium, please? The public comment period is over, and I'm responding as I have the right to do.
I'm being browbeat, because my information that I think is well-founded, and I'm not getting any information back.
I have been respectful in my comment. My comment stands, we are going to have this commission, this item on the agenda in our commission meeting very, very soon, when all of the information can be presented, instead of just having one side come up and say how the county has not been responsive, because I know that not to be the case. I have seen the work that has gone on with our engineering department, with the hired engineers that we have, and with our public relations department, and we will have this discussion in full in a commission meeting very, very soon, but we can't do it now, and so we're not going to do it now. So, with that, public comment is over, and we are to our final item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.